Good evening. Good evening. There we go. Welcome to the Pittsboro Board of Commissioners meeting. I will call this meeting for December 8, 2025 to order. And we will start as we normally do with a moment of silence. Please join me. Thank you. Commissioner Farrell, would you listen to the Pledge of Leibens?
Would everyone rise for the pledge?
Pledge of Leibens.
To the United States of America. It's your republic for which its stance, moderation, and God, indivisible, liberty, and justice to all.
Thank you. Thank you. We have the regular agenda in the consent agenda in front of us. Are there any changes or additions to either?
Yes, I would like to pull a couple of items off of consent for discussion. Item three, Roman numeral three, Person Creek Parkland. And item three, Roman numeral six, Adam Parkway dedication.
We will. Okay, we'll make those action items five and six respectively. Any other changes? Take a motion to approve the regular agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Boltons. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrell. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. I'll take a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrell. Second.
Second.
Commissioner Bonnetts, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. For information items this evening, we have the ABC financials. Are there any questions on that item? Do you want to go? Okay.
You good with that?
Hi, my name is Jamie Theogo, and I'm the Chair of the Pittsburgh ABC Board. And we have with us today, I don't know if any board members are here, but we have General Manager Scott Cox. And I just wanted to mention the materials that were included in your packet. We try to appear in front of the board every quarter just to see if there are any questions and to make sure you understand what's going on that's new. Not a lot new this time. It is the first holiday season for store number two at Northwood Landing. And we did recently send a couple of checks to you. I think Scott hand-delivered them, but we sent $21,505 to the town from our distributions from the last quarter of last fiscal year. And law enforcement received $586. And alcohol education received $820. These the adjustments, the total for law enforcement for the year was $7,400. Alcohol education received $10,300. And the town received $77,657 for the full year. I will point out that in addition to the quarterly distributions, we do have year-end excess working capital, which you have generously agreed to share with us, let us retain 40% for future programming new stores. And so your 60% was almost $80,000, and we were allowed to keep $52,000. And I appreciate that very much, and hoping that we can build that into the next budget. But other than that, store number one, store number two are doing well, and sales are above expectations. We just had a stellar first December weekend in the second store, so we're hopeful that we can bring even more money to the town. Any questions from anyone?
Making money.
Your work. Thank you.
Keep growing the town, and we can make money. But yes, I will say that the general trend nationwide and statewide is declining sales, and Pittsboro is, you know, our sales keep getting better and better. Mixed beverage is a little more challenging, but we're doing well compared to other parts of the country and the state. So thank you for your support.
Well done. Continue.
And I'll apologize, I already messed up the agenda. Organizational meeting this evening. And we're going to start now with the installation of the Mayor and Commissioners.
Doing good. You're doing good. Nice recovery.
Work on your leadership.
Yes.
I, Kyle Stevenship.
Aye, Kyle Stevenship.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities which are.
And authorities which are.
Or may be established for.
Or may be established for.
The government thereof.
The government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend the Constitution.
Maintain and defend the Constitution.
And laws of said state.
And laws of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and sharing.
And then I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of my office as mayor.
Of my office as mayor.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I guess we should.
Be good.
All right.
Please read it. Okay. I can do some zip code.
Do solemnly and sincerely affirm.
Do solemnly and clearly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will that I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities which are.
The constitutional powers and authorities which are.
Or may be established for the government thereof.
Which may be established for the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend the Constitution.
Maintain and defend the Constitution.
And laws of said state.
And laws of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as Commissioner.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as Commissioner. To my Jane Fetter.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution and laws of said state.
The Constitution of laws and said states.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as Commissioner.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as Commissioner.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Following the agenda.
Next.
We have the election of the Mayor Pro Tim. So the Board of Commissioners will select a Mayor Pro Tim to serve. Would like to make a motion?
I move to nominate or elect Jay Farrell, Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you. Is there a second, Commissioner Bonnetts? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Still counts as yes.
Thank you. I just appreciate the board, their confidence in myself, and I'll do my best.
Thank you. I just appreciate the board, their confidence in myself, and I'll do my best. Well.
Jay Farrell.
I, Jay Farrell.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
But I will be faithful.
I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
And bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional power and authority.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution and laws of said states.
The Constitution and laws of the said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of my office as mayor pro tem.
As my office of mayor pro tem.
So help me God.
So help me God. Do we have a resolution appreciation for the services of Pamela Baldwin? Whereas Pamela Baldwin served the town of Pittsburgh with distinguished and outstanding service from December twelfth, two thousand five to December eighth, twenty twenty five as commissioner. And whereas Pamela Baldwin served the town of Pittsburgh for as mayor pro tem since December twenty eleven. And whereas Pamela Baldwin put forth substantial effort towards improving the quality of life for the citizens of the town of Pittsburgh. And whereas Pamela Baldwin has selflessly dedicated countless hours, embraced personal sacrifices, and showcased remarkable community spirit in her role, all while maintaining a collaborative and approachable manner that makes engaging with her a feelingly enjoyable experience. And whereas Pamela Baldwin has put a great priority on the interests of Pittsburgh and demonstrated a profound dedication to the town's welfare. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the board of commissioners of the town of Pittsburgh, North Carolina, that Pamela Baldwin is hereby officially commended on behalf of the citizens of Pittsburgh for a valuable service rendered to the town in her official capacity as a town of Pittsburgh commissioner. Be it further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the permanent records of the town of Pittsburgh and that a copy of this resolution be presented to Pamela Baldwin as a token of our sincere appreciation. Adopted this eighth day of December, twenty twenty five. I'll take a motion to approve the resolution.
Take a motion to approve the resolution as read.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrell. Is there a second? Commissioner Bonnetts? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Made by Mark Cuban.
Very much. I would like to say one small thing. Actually consider it an honor as well as a privilege to serve the town of Pittsburgh, the citizen of Pittsburgh for the last twenty years. And it is remarkable, Pittsburgh has changed. I've tried to do all that I could to help Pittsburgh become what it should be and can be. I've worked with, I enjoyed working with town staff, the town manager, assistant manager, our attorney, and the entire board. And chief of police, we can never forget him. So again, I consider it an honor and a privilege to have served the town of Pittsburgh and the individuals in Pittsburgh to continuously vote for me and support me in all of my endeavors. Again, I'd say thank you very much and I am honored.
Okay. Up next, we have a resolution of appreciation for the services of James Vos. He's on his honeymoon tonight, so that's an excuse to join that. Um, so whereas James Vos has served one term as commissioner for the town of Pittsburgh. And whereas James Vos has put forth substantial effort towards improving the quality of life for the citizens of the town of Pittsburgh. And whereas James Vos has devoted significant time and attention in his capacity for the good of the town of Pittsburgh. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the board of commissioners of the town of Pittsburgh, North Carolina, that James Vos is hereby officially commended by this town board on behalf of the citizens of Pittsburgh for valuable service rendered to the town of Pittsburgh in his official capacity as town of Pittsburgh commissioner. Be it further resolved that this resolution be entered into the permanent records of the town of Pittsburgh and that a copy be presented to James Vos as a token of our sincere appreciation. That's adopted this eighth day of December, twenty twenty five. Have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
The resolution. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we have this that we will present to him uh on his return for his service. Okay, up next, we have a ceremonial item for uh Troy Roberson and on his retirement. We have a resolution of appreciation and acknowledgement of service to the town of Pittsburgh. Whereas Troy Devon Roberson began working for the town of Pittsburgh Police Department on July thirty first, two thousand six, and officially retired on November thirty, twenty twenty five. And whereas during his career, he held the positions of reserve patrol officer, patrol officer, community police corporal, lieutenant, captain, interim chief of police, and deputy chief. And whereas he was instrumental in developing the department's community outreach through programs and assisting with the Chatham County School System in its driver's education program. And whereas his willingness and ability to understand and respond to the concerns of the citizens of Pittsburgh has made a substantial contribution to the betterment of our community. And whereas North Carolina General Statute twenty dash one eighty seven dot two provides that retiring members of municipal law enforcement agencies may receive at the time of their retirement the badge worn or carried by them during their service within the municipality. And whereas North Carolina General Statute twenty dash one eighty seven point two further provides that the governing body of the municipal law enforcement agency may in its discretion award to a retiring member the service sidearm of such retiring member. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the board of commissioners of the town of Pittsburgh, North Carolina, that Troy Devon Roberson is hereby officially commended on behalf of the citizens of Pittsburgh for valuable services rendered to the town in his official capacity as a police officer for his professionalism, dedication, unwavering commitment, willingness and ability to understand and respond to the concerns of the citizens of Pittsburgh. Be it further resolved that the town manager or his designee be hereby authorized in accordance with the provisions of North Carolina General Statute twenty dash one eighty seven dot two to transfer Troy Devon Roberson, the badge worn by him during his service with the Pittsburgh Police Department, and his service sidearm, a Glock Model seventeen nine millimeter pistol, serial number B D A X seven five one. And be it further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the permanent records of the town of Pittsburgh and that a copy of this resolution be presented to Troy Devon Roberson. Adopted this eighth day of December, twenty twenty five. Take a motion to approve the resolution?
Take a motion to approve the resolution as read.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Farrell.
I'll second.
Commissioner Bonnetts?
Yeah.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. We'll take a five-minute recess for a little reset. Come back. We will start again with the citizens matters and start with the managers update.
Uh, no real update, just to say that uh tomorrow, due to the weather, we are operating in a two-hour delay, so town hall will open at ten thirty. Thank you.
Up next are my updates. So we had a ribbon cutting this month of uh Takentento out of the plant. So uh great to see them out there and uh ate there last night again as well. So uh good another option out there at the plant. Uh, some, I had the opportunity on November thirteenth to go to Central Pines Regional Council's office and participate in a panel discussion about utility mergers. So there's a lot of uh interest and, you know, curiosity about how that has worked for us so far. So they did a staff panel and an elected panel about utility mergers. So that was a good opportunity. And uh, of course, on November twenty third, we had the tree lighting. It's a fantastic event uh put on by Pittsburgh Business Association, and I appreciate that. November sixteenth, I went to a celebration at the now old Raffey Building about the the history of that building and the organization. So really uh fantastic event. And then uh December second, I attended the North Carolina Mayor's Association Meeting. And December third, I attended a training at UNC School of Government on rules of procedure, where they talked about following the agenda. Some upcoming events on uh Sunday, December fourteenth, we have the Pittsburgh Christmas Parade, so hope to see you all there. And December twentieth, the VFW is going to do pancakes with Santa. So last minute opportunity to get all your lists in with Santa. Central Pines RPO, Regional Planning Organization, the December meetings are canceled. Uh, we will meet again in January, I believe. Um, up next, Mayor Pro Tem Farrell.
Oh, you caught me off guard. Nothing at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Foley?
Nothing at this time.
Commissioner, sir.
Um, so on the behalf of the Pittsburgh Business Association, I would like to thank the town of Pittsburgh. This was the best tree lighting that we've ever had, and we had a drone show and which was sponsored um by the town. And it was, uh, I hear we had three thousand nine hundred attendees, um, not including the children. So I I'm really excited for next year and uh. Thanks.
Awesome. Thank you. Commissioner, hold the group.
Not at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Bonnetts?
Yes, thank you. I do want to give an update from the Chatham County Climate Advisory Committee meeting. Uh, the November twentieth meeting was skipped due to Thanksgiving. And the next meeting is December eighteenth. Uh, there were several work items that were identified uh by the County Board of Commissioners during their two-day climate action plan retreat, uh which I attended. Uh, and that will be, you'll hear more about that in future if it's relevant to the town. I'd also like to take the opportunity to give a very brief, two-minute, I promise, update to the board and to the public on an exciting new financial mechanism called C-PACE or Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy. So C-PACE is a tool that lets private lenders finance building improvements like energy efficiency, solar, EV chargers, batteries, and resilience upgrades for commercial and multifamily properties. The loan is repaid over many years as a line on the property tax bill. And it stays with the property as that property is sold, if it's sold. So that means that no county or town money is involved or at risk, but we still get the benefit of cleaner, more valuable buildings, and a stronger tax base. Um, Chatham County has already done the hard part here. Uh, the county held a public hearing and they voted to join the statewide C-PACE program established by the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina, EDP NC. Uh, EDP NC will administer that, and so the framework is already in place as established by state law passed a couple of years ago. So you might ask, why is this important? Well, in a town that's growing as fast as we are uh and with fewer and fewer people able to finance a home, living in apartments, it makes it all the more important that apartments, the apartments that we build in Pittsburgh are clean and that they include energy-saving features or solar panels to cut the power bills or EV chargers to allow renters to own an EV. or EV chargers to allow renters to own an EV. This is a small thing that the town can do to help. It costs us nothing more than a bit of staff time and this board's attention. So, uh, to unlock this for Pittsburgh businesses, commercial, uh, construction, um, I would suggest that our next step, next steps would be simple. We can ask staff to bring us a short CPACE participation resolution for the town as allowed under state law. We can hold the required public hearing and adopt that resolution with the county's concurrence. We would then work with EDPNC to get the word out so that Pittsburgh property owners, developers, uh, people contemplating commercial or, uh, apartment complexes can start using CPACE to finance projects here in Pittsburgh. I would suggest that there's, if there's others who are interested in this, that we could place this on the agenda in January or February. So.
Does that include new construction?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for hearing.
Up next is public comment. We have three people signed up this evening. So please state your name and address at the start of your comments. There's a time limit of three minutes, which will be displayed on the screen. In the interest of time and fairness, it's the board's policy not to respond directly to comments during this period. Staff will follow up as appropriate. Any speaker with handouts, so give them to the town clerk, and they'll be distributed to the board at the conclusion of the meeting. So up first is Karen Straza, followed by Nicholas Schrammick.
Is there a timer thing somewhere?
Okay.
Somewhere. Hi, my name is Karen Straza. Um, I live at 422 West Salisbury Street in Pittsburgh. I'm here today to express my concern over the use of taxpayer dollars for license plate reader cameras around Pittsburgh. I'd like to request a review of the contract with the company Flock Safety and ask the town to consider canceling use of these cameras if they're finds that are not in the best interest of our community. My concern is about privacy and the lack of transparency regarding how data collected by these cameras is used and shared with other agencies. I'm most concerned with Flock's potential use of databases for predatory practices by federal agencies. As I understand, Pittsburgh has already installed Flock cameras in four communities to, quote, assist with protecting the public. Flock has care, has contracts with towns and municipalities all over the country. They have come under scrutiny for using sketchy tactics to opt jurisdictions like Pittsburgh into sharing their license plate data with outside agents, often federal, unbeknownst to the local jurisdictions. In other words, towns and police departments may not know which agencies are using this data or if it is being used lawfully and not in violation of privacy or Fourth Amendment rights. Several cities have, uh, that have installed these cameras are canceling and walking back their contracts to Flock. This October, for example, Hillsborough canceled their contract over concerns about data privacy. Upon closer review of their contract, they became, they became concerned about language that, um, was interpreted as allowing Flock to disclose data to any government entity or third party if the company had, quote, "good faith belief of a need to do so." Hillsborough is removing the five cameras they installed as a state in the, in the best interest of their community, unquote. In Norfolk, Virginia, the local government is facing a Fourth Amendment challenge based on Flock's cameras that track and catalog core movements of their public. I'm asking for more transparency regarding Pittsburgh's Flock cameras and reconsideration of their contract with Flock. Does the town of Pittsburgh share data from Flock cameras with outside agencies and which ones? What guarantee do we have that this data is not used unlawfully? Doesn't every Pittsburgh resident have the right to know who is getting that camera, um, data and how it is being used? What happens in the future if the state or federal government makes requirements that might supersede how we want that data to be used or shared? As a taxpayer, I also question whether the installment of Flock cameras will really improve public safety. Is there any good data on how effective they actually are? Do we know if they improve public safety in the long run, given the cost? I request that the town convene a committee with community stakeholders to review the Flock contract and make recommendations. If the contract doesn't provide transparency and accountability and serve our community.
Thank you. Your time is up.
And it should be canceled. Thanks.
Up next is Nicholas Schrammick, followed by Paul Quadros.
Nicholas Schrammick, 50, Chatham Forest Drive, uh, former candidate, former candidate for Pittsburgh on board. Throughout my campaign, I faced moments that were deeply disheartening, not because of differing viewpoints, but because of how people were treated. I experienced personal attacks, online misrepresentation, and attempts to under, undermine my campaign, including, including stolen signs. These actions didn't reflect healthy civic engagement nor the spirit of Pittsburgh. Despite these challenges, I remain grateful. I want to sincerely thank the other candidates and their volunteers, Candace Hudson, Tiana Thurber, Alex Brinker, and Corey Forrest. Their kindness, integrity, and respect throughout this process reminded me of why I chose to run in the first place, to serve a community I care deeply about, not to tear others down. I also want to congratulate Candace and Tiana on their victories. It was a privilege to get to know them during the campaign. They are thoughtful, capable individuals, and I believe they will represent Pittsburgh with dedication and heart. Pittsburgh residents in safe hands. My hope moving forward is simple. Let's return to discussing ideas with civility, respect, and open-mindedness. Passion is very natural, especially when issues matter deeply, but it should be never a license for cruelty. We are neighbors, we are a community, and if we want Pittsburgh to thrive, we must treat one another with dignity, even when we disagree. To everyone hearing this, whether you supported me or not, I ask we recommit to constructive dialogue. Let's choose compassion over contempt, solutions over division, and unity over hostility. Pittsburgh's future depends on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Paul.
Quadros, 258 Belmont Road. Thank you. Uh, I'm here to echo what Karen said earlier with regard to Flock and the, uh, technologies that's now being used by police locally here, and any possibility with using or sharing that data information with federal agencies, specifically with ICE or with custom border protection. Um, Pittsburgh's 10% is blank. One in 10 people here in our town looks like me, speaks like me as a background on me. This is a issue that is concerning to us, of course. As you may know, uh, Supreme Court has ruled that all these federal agencies can profile us, specifically if we're in certain multinations, we're doing certain jobs, uh, or even just living in certain neighborhoods. The technology that's being used by Pittsburgh can be abused by other agencies. And so I think transparency is important, but I would charge the council to investigate this and to form a committee with stakeholders in, in, in our community to share information, share stories, and to really think about this technology and where it might go today and in the future. Because today it might be ICE, tomorrow it might be the IRS, might be other federal agencies. Surveillance system that's beginning to happen across the United States is a system that we don't really have our hands on just yet. And I would say that you need to think carefully about how we use technology, how technology can be used on us going into the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Up next, we have, uh, standing committee representative recommendations. So I will make the following recommendations, and then we can, um, discuss and vote. Um, so for the Chatham County Economic Development Corporation, I would recommend Commissioner Foley. For Central Pines Regional Council, I'd recommend Commissioner Bonnet's. For Chatham County Climate Change Advisory Committee, I'd recommend Commissioner Bonnet's. For Chatham County Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, recommend Commissioner Hunsaker. For Triangle Area Rural Planning Organization, I'll recommend myself. For Chatham Chamber of Commerce, I'll recommend Commissioner Thurber. And for the ABC Board, I'll recommend Commissioner Farrell. Any questions, comments? Okay. Take, uh, motion to approve those appointments?
So moved, as, as you've said.
Thank you, Commissioner Bonnet.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Foley. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, up next, we have a public hearing for text amendment PB 25596, Turkey Creek Conditional Zoning Amendment to PB 23289. Right? I'm sorry. Uh, I'll take a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Bonnet's. Second?
Second.
Commissioner Foley, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Well, this one's pretty simple. Um, you have a, uh, conditional zoning done. If someone needs to amend it, unfortunately, they have to go back through the same process. This is the, uh, map of the, uh, Turkey Creek Assembly, and the, uh, rotation of it isn't important. What you need to be looking is the two areas that are blue. So we have Kate Murdock here from McAdams Company submitted a petition to amend PB 23289, list of permitted uses in the M1 CZ district, which is the blue areas on there, to include office, medical, dental, and office park, medical, dental. And so in your packet, uh, if you go the next page, there's a, yeah, it's just a couple of words that are in blue, literally to be added to paragraph C under the land uses. Does anyone have any questions? For me or for the petition?
Any questions for the board? There was no one signed up for this public hearing, so I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Foley. Second?
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim Farrell? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Uh, any other discussion among the board? All right. I'll take a motion to recommend approval of PB 25596 as presented.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Commissioner Bonnet's, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, up next, we have a appointment for the Board of Adjustment. There is one application for the Board of Adjustment. Any questions or comments?
This is, uh, Timothy Pemberton.
Yes.
Yeah, I was very impressed with his application and his background. Um, I'll make a motion to, uh, appoint Timothy Pemberton to the Board of Adjustments.
For a term to expire December 31st, 2028?
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Farrell, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Up next, we have appointment of a planning board member. We had, uh, significant interest in this position.
It's one of eight, one ATJ and one in town.
Correct. Yes.
I'd like to move for appointment of, uh, renewal appointment of Christina Piard for the in-town planning board representative.
Okay. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Can we talk about her history of, uh, attendance? Let's talk about that. I know that the, uh, the requirement in the town is, is three absences. Is that correct? Uh, it's a very important, critical, we rely on the, the planning board. So, uh, I, I would like to hear some feedback. I would love to overlook that if, uh, I could be persuaded to do so. Sure. Yeah, I think, uh, Christina Piard, uh, has shown with the, the depth and rigor of her questions that she's taking the job very seriously. Um, and she has been attendance, in attendance at those meetings, which by my personal viewpoint, were the most important of the planning board's, uh, past year's worth of work. Um, and, uh, I probably should have paid more attention to those UDO amendments because I gathered that, um, it's a requirement that after three misses that she, uh, be dismissed, and I thought that that meant that, uh, we, she, she could be, or individuals who miss three meetings or more could be dismissed. Um, I would reconsider that. I see no reason to interrupt her, her service because, uh, she is taking it seriously and she's learned, learned quite a lot. Uh, and, um, I think it's also important, uh, the role that she plays, uh, with the, uh, uh, Wolf Speed Company. Um, it's an important manufacturer, uh, an employer. Yes, they've cut their workforce significantly, but they are still a presence in, in our county. Um, and they are representing a, uh, a very, um, significant part of the future economy. So. Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Don't have any discussion, but I'd like to, uh, nominate Ryan Brunetti for the planning board.
Okay, so there's a, there's a current motion on the floor for Christina that we'll have to address, um, for an in-town nomination. Okay. Is there any other discussion on that motion?
I'll say additionally that, uh, that I also found Ryan Brunetti, his application was compelling. Um, and I think that, um, at a time when we're growing so rapidly, um, I've been wondering if we shouldn't increase the size of the planning board. Uh, regardless, I think there may be some, some vacancies coming open in future, and I, I'm, that's where I'm looking to, uh, possibly having Ryan Brunetti come into service in 2026 or 27.
Yeah, I'll just mention this, uh, there, I would thank everybody for applying for this planning board because usually we don't have anybody that applies, and we just. Uh, Nicholas, appreciate you applying. I have three on my list, so, uh, if the time comes up, I hopefully that these three can go on this board.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrell. I'll definitely echo that. Um, it, it is really heartening to see so much interest. And, and so many expressions of interest in, in this volunteer work as we shape our community in the future.
Any further discussion on that motion? Okay. All those in favor of the appointing Christina Piard to the in-town planning board member position expiring December 31st, 2028, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
What was your?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. Motion passes. Uh, up next, we have the ETJ appointment.
I would like to make a motion to appoint, uh, Connie McAdams to the planning board.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Uh, I, I will say, uh, I think Connie has done a, a very good job as well. Um, she has a very clear, um, uh, history of working with the community to elevate concerns. Uh, environmental concerns seem to be her real specialty, but, uh, she also was asking about equity things and, and, um, matters about property, private property rights. Um, and so I'm, I'm very supportive of this motion.
Good. Thank you. Uh, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, we have a Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Member appointment for a term that ends June 30, 2027. We had, uh, five applicants for this position.
I'd like to nominate Nicholas Schrammick for that position.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. Schrammick, uh, has, uh, like he stated in his.
Mr. Schrammick uh has, uh, like he stated in his uh public comments, served with integrity and ran on, on a uh pro Pittsburgh, pro-business uh forward-thinking idea. He is totally excited about the Parks Department and finding connections there. I think with his uh intelligence and his enthusiasm, he'd make a great dynamic asset to that department.
Okay, any other discussion?
I'll just say I'm, I'm grateful for Nicholas Schrammick's application. And I um I'll be nominating someone else. And um the, the candidate that uh that really jumped out to me was Sarah Justice. Sarah has a background in municipal work, uh but I think she also understands the role of advisory boards, so I don't think she'll be getting in, in staff business. Uh, she does work for the town of Cary as an environmental outreach program manager. Um, she also has two children and has raised those kids here in town and, and has experience in our parks. So, yeah.
Any other discussion on the nomination of Nicholas Schrammick? Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion fails.
So I'll move for Sarah Justice to uh be appointed to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion?
I, I don't think I need to repeat myself, but uh I do think she's an outstanding candidate and uh very much looking forward to her digging in.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Mayor.
Motion passes, thank you. Up next, we have a designation of the authorized signatories for withdrawals from depositories of the town of Pittsburgh. So we have um myself, Heather, Edna, the mayor pro Tim, and then we need a commissioner as well. Ideally, who's in town available. Then would like to volunteer for that role?
I'll volunteer.
One question, Mayor, am, am I still on this?
You would be.
Yes.
Okay.
So that needs, that needs a motion, doesn't it?
Yes.
Uh, I move for Commissioner Foley to be named as the uh commissioner uh for the Signatory Authority after mayorship and Mayor Pro Tempore Farrell. Did I word that right?
No, I don't think so, but it worked well. Um, I, I will try and fit it in here, uh, so let's say.
So a motion to adopt the resolution designated authorized signatories for withdrawals from from depositories of the town of Pittsburgh with the selected uh commissioners.
Of Commissioner Foley.
Uh, of Commissioner Foley.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Farrell. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, the item uh moved to number five, so uh Robeson Creek Parkland Budget Amendment.
Yes, thank you. So um with, with parkland acceptance, uh perhaps we've seen this before and I just missed it, but I, I don't recall seeing where we are paying the tax bill for receipt of parkland donations, so uh can staff help enlighten myself, the board, and the public?
Yes, so it was essentially a timing issue of when the land was transferred. So in the past, when Chatham Park transferred the land for um Moniqueure Pittsburgh Road, that was done, I believe, in December of the year that it was done, so that was after they had already paid taxes. Um, and so then, as of the record of January thirty-first, the land was in the name of the town of Pittsburgh, and therefore there are no taxes assessed. This property was transferred in June of this year. Um, so the taxes, because it was in the name of a public, um, not a nonprofit, um, as of January thirty-first, the tax year, there is a tax bill outstanding which has to be paid in full, and so we are on the hook for our prorated amount of that. Which is one of the given.
Makes perfect sense, thank you for that explanation.
So going forwards, we're just going to be looking to time any transfers.
That's great. That's what I want to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, I'll take a motion to approve the budget amendment.
So moved.
Thank you, Fisher Bonnetts, second?
A second?
Thank you. Uh, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. And the other action item is the Chatham Parkway dedication for R fifty-nine thirty A. Uh, Mr. Messick?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, uh, in two thousand twenty-three, the town in Chatham Park entered into an agreement to accelerate the um construction of a portion of the Chatham Parkway called fifty-nine thirty A. Uh, in that agreement, the town agreed to be an intermediary between the owners of the property and the Department of Transportation. Um, what you have before you is a resolution to amend that uh agreement from twenty twenty-three to provide for the different owners of the property now who weren't owners and at the time of twenty twenty-three, and to facilitate the construction of both sections of the road, the fifty-nine thirty A and fifty-nine thirty B that will eventually run Chatham Parkway all the way from Suddles Road, which was closed a couple of months ago, all the way fifteen-five oh one. Um, what you have in the package are copies of proposed deeds to the town for, from all the various uh owners of property, and then proposed deeds from the town to the Department of Transportation for the right-of-way. It's a simple matter that was uh essentially agreed to in twenty twenty-three, except that that only dealt with fifty-nine thirty A. DOT has seen fit to split the project into fifty-nine thirty A and fifty-nine thirty B, but that's, that's the portion of the road that we're talking about. So the um, the resolution is to authorize the town manager or mayor to execute the deeds on behalf of the town to transfer the property to DOT.
Thank you. So any questions for Paul?
Yeah, but just one question real quick. So the, the surveys that we were given, there, there are stream buffers, critical buffers along the Hall River. None of that has, has changed at all, correct? This is just an exchange.
Well, the map probably shows more than what is involved in this. These are the, the, the right-of-way, the portions for the highway that will be constructed, that are being transferred to DOT in fee, and then easements for various uh access and, and um and drainage along the, the right-of-way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Messick. What I was hoping to uh bring to light by pulling this onto the action item agenda for discussion is, number one, this, this is not, in my opinion, something that should be in consent agenda because of the magnitude and the importance of it. Recognizing that the, the decisions were made previously by the board in twenty twenty-three, and, and I think that this goes all the way back to the bonus allocation debacle uh in twenty-one. But I would assert that this is not routine housekeeping. I recognize that um the, the language of the agreement uh needs to change, be updated, to recognize uh to, to uh name the current parties, uh W Y W USA, uh S E LLC is one of the parties, and then uh D M B LLC is the uh developer associated with the Asteria Project in collaboration with Disney. But this does um reaffirm uh that prior vote and decision to give up N C DOT bonus allocation funds to the Chatham Park investors and their assignees. So I think, by my understanding of this, a, a large reason for this action before the board tonight is uh to fix a, a problem that was in the prior legal documents, uh not specifically stating, I mean, Chatham Park investors are very good about making sure their language says CPI or they're assignees in the future. In other words, whomever is going to buy that land or whomever would own it in future. I think in this case, that was missed, and I think that's a big part of the, the action tonight. I think uh there was also some mention of Suddles Road and that small change. But I just didn't want this to go pat, to pass unnoticed uh and unobserved. So, um, yeah, I want to make a motion that we table this uh until January uh to give um our new commissioners the full benefit of time to fully understand uh the history and the background and the nature of what's, what's being passed.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Bonnetts, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, any discussion on that motion?
Yeah, I have some discussion on that, I mean, uh, Chatham Park went, was one reason on this, and correct me if I'm wrong, to get this bypass accelerated, correct? Was there, was one reason on this? If we slow this down, what is this going to send DOT a message? That uh Pittsburgh's slow and doesn't want to work with us, and what's going to happen down the road? That we got, we received acceleration for this highway, the five oh one part. So I'm, I'm not following, John, what your um conflict is.
Well, uh, as I said, it's not routine housekeeping, this is a significant step. I don't intend to try and fight to work this overturned or block it. We should uphold our word, even though I was in the minority and opposed it. I don't intend to try and overturn this. But I think that it it's, it's a significant matter, and there's significant history behind it. And uh I want to make sure that new commissioners uh are understanding what they're signing on to.
So uh maybe we can ask them, um, instead of you speaking for them. Can we, we're risking?
Yeah, yeah.
Because um
Just speaking for myself.
So one, one statement that you made that I, I need some clarification, you said that there is, this is a housekeeping issue. Can you, can you expand on that, please?
Said it's not routine housekeeping. It should not have been in the consent agenda.
And, and the reason why is because?
Again, this further affirms and, and ratifies a prior decision by this board to give five million dollars, excuse me, four and a half million dollars of N C DOT funds to the Chatham Park investors. So um Commissioner Foley, you may not have heard this story, but uh I've heard several times former mayor Cindy Perry explain that after a meeting on a helicopter ride arranged by the Chatham Park investors, uh, the Secretary of the Department of Transportation for North Carolina looked her straight in the eye and said, these funds are the town's funds to use for whatever your transportation priorities are. And my understanding is that the Chatham Park investors, the principals, were in that meeting when he said that. This board, in the past, board majority decided to give that money to Chatham Park investors, disregarding the fact that we had already uh Highway eighty-seven widening on the stip list that we'd been working for many years to get it on the stip list. And then what do you know? It was removed from the stip list for lack of money. I made these arguments back then. The Chatham Park investors presented the case, they implied that they would simply not spend the money and not build the Chatham Parkway, which was just false and misleading. So um this is just some of the history. Hadn't really wanted to bring this all out tonight. I had hoped that we could uh agree to have this uh tabled until January.
So this is four and a half million dollars is where, it went to Chatham Park, there was a check cut for that, or what was the process?
There, there is a process. As the uh land is given to the N C DOT and as, actually to the town, and then town gives it to DOT, and as money is invested to build that highway, uh, there is a process by which N C DOT allocates funds back to the town, and the town will cut checks to the Chatham Park investors. Staff have comments?
I think Mr. Bonnetts is conflating something that the town did in twenty twenty, which dealt with bonus allocations, and that involved uh a finite amount of money that was allocated to the town uh by virtue of work that was done by Chatham Park. In twenty twenty-three, you all agreed that that, those funds, which amounted to one point nine million dollars, be allocated to the Chatham Parkway. So that's an issue that's been settled for at least two years. And all this deals with is a swath of real estate. It's nothing to do with money. DOT, it's my understanding, is ready to open the completed portion of the Parkway, but needs this, uh, these deeds to be able to do it.
That's what's the issue.
I don't think there's any conflation going on, sir. The bonus allocation is mentioned explicitly in this document.
It is, and it's
It's a part of the same deal.
This is an amendment to the twenty twenty-three agreement, not the twenty twenty agreement. Twenty twenty agreement was allocated in the twenty-three agreement to the Parkway. Like you said, you were in the minority, the majority of the board approved it.
Understood, I'm not questioning that, not challenging that.
All this deals with is a swath of the real estate in order to dedicate the right-of-way to DOT.
Mr. Messick, you said the, the timing component of this is that DOT is waiting on it to open Chatham Park, the portion.
The portion is completed, yes, that's, that's my understanding. So that would delay it another month.
Do you have a question, and it may be, um, I, I have two questions, actually. Um, and, and this may not even be a thing, and I apologize if it is not, I am new, so please bear with me if I ask something that is. So this is an amendment to the twenty twenty-three, and so work has gone into preparing this, um, and work has to be paid for, so is there, is there a reimbursement for town staff and town attorney for redoing this agreement with CPI, or is that even is that even a thing? Like, is, who pays for the redoing of the document, the agreement, and, and so on?
Chatham Park is paid for the document.
And um you said that this is going, they're waiting for this, the road to open, or once it's dedicated, um, they are ready to go, or because Commissioner Farrell mentioned that there could be problems with DOT, could somebody speak on that a little bit more for me, I apologize, just what the consequences would be for waiting the month?
They won't open the portion of the road that's completed.
I got that part, but I was more speaking about how he was talking about the relationship with DOT, that's all.
Not saying we have a bad relationship, but anybody that deals with DOT, it can be a long-term adventure. And we've already noticed, have seen.
All right, thank you for bearing with me as All right, thank you for bearing with me as I navigate and learn. I appreciate it.
The question is wrong.
Any other comments or questions on the motion to postpone action till January? Okay, all those in favor of postponing till January?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm going to say aye. I need more time to understand. I am impressed.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Up next, we have a closed session. So I'll take a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143, 318, 11, A3, A4, and A6.
It was a motion.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Foley. Second, Commissioner Bonnetts, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, welcome. We are back from closed session and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Bonnetts. Second?
Second.
Mr. Pro Tem Farrell, all of the favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I'd like to wish everybody a merry, merry Christmas.